All right, I'd like to officially call to order the Ross Local Schools Board of Education Organizational Meeting, Thursday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. First thing we're gonna do is swear in our three new Board of Education members. So if you guys wouldn't mind to maybe walk to the middle here and we can kinda stand together and I'll read the oath and swear you in officially.
Justin.
We're gonna read them all at one time and you can just say "I will" or "I do" at the end here. All right, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Ross Local School District in Butler County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified. Thank you very much.
Welcome, guys.
Official.
At this point, we will do a roll call to affirm that everyone is in attendance. Mr. Young.
Present.
Mrs. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Kleinfelder.
Present.
Mr. Gunther.
Present.
Mr. Beckman.
Present.
At this point, would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as strong.
First, order of business here before we move on to anything else, we do have to elect a president pro temp until we formally identify officers for this year. So do we have a nomination for president pro temp for this meeting?
I nominate Keith Kleinfelder.
Okay. Do we have a second to that nomination?
Second.
All right. Mr. Beckman?
Hold it, are there any other candidates?
No other candidates, you're in. All right, we'll call the roll now. Mr. Beckman?
Approve.
Mr. Gunther?
I'd like to nominate Greg Young.
No, no.
Yeah, he's already been nominated.
This is a present pro temporary.
Oh, okay. Just temporary.
Just temporary.
Temporary.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
All right, so you're gonna turn over me. The next item is reorganization of the Board of Education, election of officers, so I get this pro temp position for one vote. At this time, we take nominations for the twenty-four president. If I went making that motion.
I nominate Greg Young.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any other nomination? Mr. Castater, call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Gunther?
Approve.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
All right.
Now, Mr. Young can take over for the rest of me. Thank you. Okay, our next item is to elect a vice president. Do we have a nomination for vice president?
Nominate Amy Webb.
I'll second. Okay, we have a nomination, we have a second. Any others? Okay, would you call the roll, please, Mr. Castater?
I will.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next item's going to be to approve the schedule of meetings. We have that, we have membership with the Ohio School Board Association establishing a board service fund and can we block A, can we block B, C, and D together, take a vote on all three of those?
Do we have any changes to the board meeting dates?
Yes, so in your packet, I gave you a copy, yep, it was fine, a copy of some draft dates. So page one are just school board meetings and page two are the board committees. And again, this is just a draft schedule of dates.
Okay. Is everybody like, I know Brent and I already talked, we both have conflicts on a couple days, so. Oh, well, let's do that then, let's talk about those. What dates? June twentieth, I would prefer not to have the meeting that day. Let's see, that is. Third Thursday. Yeah. Do you want to stay with that week or do you all wanna go to the next Thursday? Mr. Conklin, do you have any preference?
No, the May meeting is the sixteenth of May, so just so we have three to four weeks in between, so either we can go the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh or stay within that week.
I would prefer the thirteenth because I'll be out of town the following week, the last week in June.
Thirteenth works.
Thirteenth?
Does that work for you, Keith?
Thirteenth's fine.
Okay.
Thirteenth.
So we'll make that the thirteenth. And what was the other date, Keith? Brent said something about May or March twenty-first. March twenty-first. All right, let's see. Mr. Conklin, anything from your side on?
No, the twenty-eighth, there's a concert at Morgan Elementary, but there's, I don't see many conflicts.
I'd like to try to avoid that if we can.
So we can either do Wednesday the twentieth as an option or Thursday the fourteenth.
How would Wednesday the twentieth work for everybody?
Thursday the fourteenth would work better.
Okay. Thursday the fourteenth?
Should be fine.
March fourteenth? Okay, let's make that March meeting the fourteenth. Any other concerns with conflicts?
July tenth is the other one, I'm out of town.
Pardon?
July tenth. So, Mr. Young, what I was telling Mr. Gunther is, so July tenth is a placeholder for hiring teachers that they have to resign from another district and we hire them, so it's a five-minute meeting.
Yeah.
We just need three board members present, so I don't think all five.
Let's hold off on moving that right now and if something comes up where we need everybody, we can change it later. That's okay.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay. All right. Any others? Okay, good. So let's, we still okay with blocking those three items?
Before, I would suggest on page two are the, if the school board wants to keep the school board committees, those are the five committees and then the dates that we have listed. So this will be appropriate time to designate two board members if the board wants to keep these to each committee and then determine a time.
I don't know if we're ready to designate who's gonna be on what committee.
Okay.
Right now, we know some at this point, but I think we'll be ready to do that for sure.
Sure, that can hold off until the next meeting.
Yeah, let's put it off the next meeting.
So, Mr. Young, what we'll do is on page?
If there are committee meetings between now and January regular meeting, then those people can just go, they can go to those meetings and we'll know.
I think the only one there is the finance.
Finance.
Seventeenth, that's it.
Which we can either, we can keep that or move it to another date after the regular board meeting.
I think finance are pretty set, I think it's gonna be Keith and Brent.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing you say is next board meeting will finalize?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we'll do is on page one, we'll make these changes, put them on our website, publish it in board docs, and we'll finalize the dates.
Okay. So, anything else on items B, C, or D?
Just for clarity's sake, the board service fund is just a, an amount of money we set aside each year from the district to pay for professional expenses for board members that may attend Ohio School Board Association Conference, any other professional meetings that may arise. So we designate that fund and allocate some money there to be able to cover those expenses if needed.
Is our membership in OSBA based on our student members?
It is, ADM.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other comments on B, C, or D? Okay, do we have a motion to approve those three items?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Beckman makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Webb, seconds. Would you call the roll, Mr. Castater?
Hello? Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to legislative liaison, we're gonna have a wrestling contest over this. The loser has to be the legislative liaison. So, Mrs. Webb, you've been the legislative liaison, can you tell us a little bit about what that involves?
Correct. Currently, as it stands, it involves just being apprised and up-to-date on current policies, upcoming legislation, where they're at in committees, whether or not they've been voted on, passed, approved, into law, and then presenting that at board meetings. Is that something that has, somebody has to be nominated for or is it just something that people volunteer for?
No, we, I don't, I don't think we have to do a nomination for legislative liaison.
Yeah.
Somebody just agreed to do it.
Right.
If nobody wants to do it, I'll continue doing it, but I will gladly pass it over as well.
Well, for now, we'll let you, we'll let you continue in your role, since you have experience with that. We appreciate that, but I would like to say this, I think it's important for board members to be active in keeping track of legislation and making sure that we are contacting our state legislators in terms of things that we feel strongly about. You know, that is important, they do, I think, listen, they may not always agree, but I think it's, it's an important role. And so, if there's something that we feel that, that we need to get input on, then I think, please feel free to say, hey, this is something I think we need to look into or we can have Mr. Conklin look into something and explain it to us more fully and so forth, so. Okay, so, thank you. Okay, Mr. Castater?
Yeah, I have a handful of items here, I'll just talk briefly and go through each of the letters, just so everyone's kind of aware of what we're.
And we'll try to block them all together.
Yeah, we'll block them all together for a vote, but I'll just do a quick description so everyone has an understanding of what we're looking at. So first one is just advancement of funds, that allows me to advance money from the general fund to other funds on an as-needed basis prior to, for waiting for tax dollars to come in or things like that, and then be able to replenish them after the fact. We also have an authorization to appoint cashiers on the agenda, which is a list of individuals that are within our buildings, within the athletic department, that collect money on a daily basis. We like to approve those individuals as cashiers on the board agenda. Affirm distribution of interest income, basically what that means is if we earn interest into, if we earn interest in certain funds, that interest is deposited into that same fund. So if we would have an interest-bearing account for the cafeteria, as an example, within food service, the interest would go into the food service fund. It's pretty standard, pretty standard practice as far as that goes. The other one, a couple more on here, authorize the treasurers to pay bills as per appropriations and invest funds where possible. We order bills, most of the time the vendors wanna get paid, so that gives me the ability to pay the bills as they come in, as long as it fits within the budget that we set at the beginning of the year. D is a big one, the, this is a resolution that allows me to request an advance on our tax dollars from the county auditor's office. So normally, tax bills go out in the month of February, our full settlement normally doesn't come until the month of April, we can request an advance on those funds, which is an important thing, especially in today's world where we have a lot of, we're earning a lot of interest on our funds that are invested. So that, that's something that allows me to send an email to the county auditor's office and say, hey, give us our money. Those tax dollars are, we're entitled to those and we wanna get those as soon as we possibly can into our accounts so we can earn interest as quickly as possible. Authorization to invest funds, we do have some of our cash that's in an investment program with Red Tree Financial, so that, we'd like to continue that relationship and invest funds where possible so we can earn a return on those. Letter F, signature authorization to be a signer to expend funds for the district, that one's pretty standard as well. Appropriation modifications between fund accounts, that gives me the ability to adjust budget numbers. We appropriate money generally twice a year, we do a temporary appropriations in June and then do a permanent in September, which is kind of our permanent budget for the year. So that gives me the ability to make appropriation modifications within the funds on an as-needed basis, we don't have to do that very often. And the last, I think the interest income is on there, again, it was in a different spot on the agenda I printed. And then letter I is the tax budget, you have a full copy of that in front of you, we did have a hearing at four-thirty, no one, no one attended the hearing, but, so that is a process that we have to develop a tax budget and send to the county auditor's office each year. Essentially what that is, is kind of the first look ahead towards fiscal year twenty-five, what do we anticipate bringing in, property taxes, income tax, those kind of things, how much is gonna be diverted to the general fund, how much is gonna go into our bond fund, how much is gonna go into our permanent improvement? So that's a budget that we send to the county auditor's office for approval. It's not, it's very much an estimate and a guess. In a lot of cases, it's also essentially tied to our five-year forecast that we submit twice a year, so a lot of those numbers are exactly the same as what's in the five-year forecast that we approved in November.
Thank you, Mr. Castater, and I'd like to say that I hope people understand that these are all very important things, but they are annual items on the agenda, so we're blocking them all together simply because it's something we do every year, they're very standard and routine in terms of things that the board has to approve on an annual basis.
Correct.
But they are very important things, I might add. So do we have a motion to approve items A through I on the treasurer's recommendations?
I'll motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Webb makes a motion, Mr. Beckman seconds, all in favor of the motion, would you call the roll, please, Mr. Castater?
Yes. Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Okay, thank you. It's moving on to the superintendent authorizations. Mr. Conklin, would you walk us through these, please?
Yes, sir, we'd like to block items A through J together, I'll briefly describe each item. Item A is the authorization to approve professional meeting expenses for our teaching staff. Item B is approval of leave of absence. Item C is district purchasing agent, so the board will give me authorization to serve as the purchasing agent for the school district. Item D is an authorization to employ temporary personnel. Item E is the board designate to approve bus routes, we approve bus routes, any overnight trips come to the school board, so these are our daily bus stops that we make, obviously we work with the transportation department, but it gives me approval, gives me authorization to approve those. Item F, student suspensions, I will serve as the appeal person for student suspensions that ever would occur. Item G, approval of tuition waivers, this is for Ohio revise code thirty-three thirteen sixty-four, which is in totaman to attend school, waivers at this point are second part of all-day kindergarten, the parents choose, that would fall under this category of tuition. Item H is to represent the district through due process if there's a special ed complaint from a parent. And then item I, there are two resolutions attached, these are our legal firm and the Sub-Britten is the first resolution, the second one is Dinsmore, which is our bond council. And then finally, we do purchase liability insurance for board members. So those are items A through J for your approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions about those? Once again, the same thing I said about the treasurer, these are all routine approvals that are done every year, and again, they're just items that need to be taken care of and let's, do we have somebody that will move to approve these?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, would you call the roll, Mr. Castater?
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conklin and Mr. Castater.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is the twenty-four twenty-five school calendar, and I'm gonna start out on this item by asking Mr. Conklin if he would just review the process of how the school calendar is put together and the twenty-four twenty-five calendar in particular.
Sure, let me first of all talk about when the school calendar was approved, so January of twenty-three, so a year ago, the school board approved two different calendars, one for the twenty-three twenty-four school year and one for the twenty-four twenty-five school year. So those were board-approved on January of twenty-three. So backtrack three, four months before then, I'll kinda, I'll talk through the process of the curriculum department and I got together, we talked to the school board to get input on what the school board would like to see in a calendar. At that point, the curriculum department came up with five different calendars for both school years. We then went to our district administration and received input from our district administrators. We worked closely with the REA, the teachers' union, to get feedback on what they thought a calendar should be. So at that point, we went from five calendars to three with some conversations, again, back and forth with administrators, back and forth with our teachers' union, we came down to two calendars. At that point, we, we allowed the staff here in our district to vote on the two calendars and that was the calendar that was board-approved. So it went through a very collaborative process of getting input from our staff members on what a calendar should look like, and I can get into the rationale later, but that's the process that we went through.
Okay. And would it be fair to say that the calendars for both this school year and next school year are similar in nature in terms of things that are included in the calendars?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I know we've had, several board members have had concerns about the calendars and one of the things I've heard, I think, most often is the concern with the start date being early, how much earlier is the start date than what it was last year?
Couple of days, three, four days, maybe.
Okay. Is there any particular reason why the start date was earlier than it was this, this school year?
Let me rephrase that, Mr. Young, so the start date for twenty-three twenty-four was August tenth.
Okay.
And then this would be August eighth, so two days.
Okay, okay, okay.
So let me talk about the rationale of a calendar. We have some educational reasons of why we chose these two calendars. The first is we wanna make sure that the first semester is done before winter break. That obviously is an educational stance for educators to make sure that you give end-of-the-quarter exams before you leave for the holidays. You don't wanna come back, take two weeks off, come back and then give exams. So that was the first criteria. Then you look at what's different with our calendar, there are seven professional development days put into the calendar, and I think this is a big piece of why the calendar is what it is. So there are many demands from the state of Ohio to our teachers. For example, I'm gonna highlight two of these to kinda paint a picture of why we have seven PD days. So in the state of Ohio, every K through three teacher has to go through eighteen hours of dyslexia training. So if you think about that, that's a pretty intensive program that every K through teacher has to go through. Well, when do you give that training? One thought would be you could bring in substitute teachers to relieve teachers in the classroom to take that class or those trainings. The problem is, there's a national shortage with substitute teachers, you can't find substitute teachers, people are not, unfortunately, going into the teaching profession, so that kinda throws that out. The second piece of our PD, why we have some professional development days, the state of Ohio, House Bill thirty-three is now mandating every teacher, K through twelve, be trained in the science of reading. So if you think about all of our teachers, K through twelve, any subject you teach, you have to go through, it's called science of reading, and that's House Bill thirty-three mandated by the state. So we have rationale of why we need so many PD days, and unfortunately.
How many hours is that?
I don't, I don't know that offhand, we can dig into it. You have to have the training done before June of twenty-five, so we'd have all next year to get that done, but I'll, I'll get back to the board on those requirements. But our PD days, and again, I've been doing this for thirty-one years, our professional development days are more engaging than I've ever seen before, and I'd be more than happy to show the school board the agendas of what our teachers and staff go through, so you can actually see over time how much PD that, or learning that our staff goes through. The second piece of this is, you know, with our social-emotional piece in our society now, our staff and administration believes that breaks are needed in between first semester and second semester, so we have some built-in breaks that we believe and our staff believes are needed for students and also for teachers. So those are really the three components of why we chose the two calendars. I understand that, you know, there's many people have different views on different, on the calendars, but that was our rationale of why we came up with these different calendars. And a side note is, we did compare, there's a hundred and seventy-three student days and those are in line with other districts. So this data is a couple of years old, but for example, Lakota, two years ago, had a hundred and seventy-three days also, Talawanda had a hundred and seventy-five student days, Hamilton City, a hundred and sixty-nine student days, Fairfield, a hundred and seventy-six student days. So the number of student days that we have, one seventy-three, are in line with what the other districts are doing. So that's some rationale of kinda why we came up with, you know, those two calendars.
Did you say that the dyslexia training was K to three?
K three.
K three.
Eighteen hours, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that. And then the science of reading is K to twelve?
It's K twelve, every subject area.
Every subject area.
Yep, has to be completed by June of twenty-five.
And that's a one-time thing, so it makes calendar year only or is this a repeat?
I believe it's a one-time only, but I'll get back with the board.
Okay. How did you arrive, just out of curiosity, how did you arrive at the number of PD days?
Well, I think the curriculum department looked at their scope of what they had accomplished for the year and tried to lay it out systematically from August to July, June, to get those things accomplished. So, and the two things that I highlighted, believe me, there's fifteen, twenty more than the curriculum department has to implement, so, again, I just highlighted two of the other reasons.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any board members like at this point to make any statements about any concerns they have with the schedule?
How many, so we have a hundred and seventy-three student days, as far as the number of hours per, or how, how many more student days are we going than necessary to include those calamity days?
So that, we are way over the threshold. Mr. Castater, you know that, what that number is?
I don't.
Of the state minimum, is that your question?
Because I know it's based on the number of hours, not the number of days.
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
Except for all-day or half-day kindergarten.
Correct.
They're pretty, there's not much of a, I don't know the exact number, there's not much of a margin for them in terms of hours with. There's not much of a margin for them in terms of hours with a hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and seventy-five.
But the history of snow days in the, for, for kindergarten?
Four days, four days for half-day kindergarten.
But the history of winters here, we've never even come close to meet that threshold.
Right.
Any other comments?
Oh, I'll speak up. The, so I've heard things from the community, as well as my friends. I've got a couple of young kids in the school district, as well as they do. Um, yeah, from a standpoint as a parent, trying to find a babysitter on the days that teachers are having to come in, they find it very difficult. You know, if they're able to continue the babysitting during the school, you know, during the summer, it's a lot easier to go an extra week or an extra two weeks than it is for them to find a random person on a Friday. So, um, you know, I personally, I would like to see the start date pushed back, you know, even if it's just a week or something along that lines. I can also speak to, uh, you know, what happens on those days where students are going one or two days here or there. They get an extended break, the kids lose their focus. So yeah, the teachers need it for a break. But the unfortunate side effect of kids is if you don't get into a routine, and when they fall out of it, they tend to fall out of it. So multiple times, they'll come home, what'd you do today? And it was not a good story. There was a lot of mis-focus on it. So, you know, we can, we can either, you know, go towards what the teachers want to do, you know, adults who can, in my opinion, handle the extra kind of stress or kids who need the education. That's kind of where I'd put the line at.
Okay.
Yeah, I've actually, I've gotten, I've gotten feedback from the community, from parents, teachers in the district. A lot of the concern is, is kind of piggybacking off of what Brent said, we, we've got some issues with the, the focus piece where you go to school, like, for example, Christmas break. I kind of felt like the kids were not engaged before Christmas break because we only had three days that week, and then they come back for two days. If there's a, if we could structure that a little bit better so that it's a Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday week off, you know, breaking that up in the middle of the week. A lot of teachers, too, have, have indicated that they're not fans of these Friday through Monday breaks because, again, it takes a longer time period for them to get the kids back on track and regain their focus. Those are just a few of the things I've heard from the community and the teachers.
Anybody else? Mrs. Webb, do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, similar to what, you know, you both had said. Um, I think the start date is just not very popular with anybody in the community. The schedule itself with some of the days, more so probably in this year's calendar than next year's, but it's, it's not family-friendly with, like, a day off here or there trying to secure childcare. Um, that's the feedback I've gotten even from my neighbors. And so, I, I mean, from a personal standpoint, um, you know, and I, I'm in education, I definitely agree that we should end the semester before, you know, Christmas break, winter break, whatnot. Um, and I understand that might mean starting a little sooner, but I think August eighth is, is extreme. Even if it is just a, a week later, I think that would satisfy both the community and, I think, and the teachers that it could accomplish the goals of, you know, ending the semester before break. And I think that's, that's almost the consensus, like I said, that, that I hear. I, I get that, um, you know, we've had that week at Thanksgiving for the last couple of years. And while that is nice, I, I think if you were to survey people and say, would you rather go those two days before Thanksgiving? Or would you rather come back August eighth? You're gonna probably hear, we'd rather go those two days at Thanksgiving. I don't know, fall break, I mean, that also is kind of something, you don't know if we need, you know, a four-day weekend for a fall break. You know, maybe like a, a day to split up first and second quarter. But I think there are ways that, you know, it, it could be worked in. That, like I said, could satisfy, you know, both sides a little bit, but just that August eighth, I think, really hit people hard.
Okay. Mr. Conkle, what kind of feedback have you gotten about the calendar, the last, this year and next year's calendar?
So when this was approved a year ago, I had less than a handful of people have contacted me, community members, uh, to express their frustration. So not a lot of people, uh, have not heard from staff members, uh, on a negative side. But again, less than five community members reach out to me.
Mr. Kleinfelder, you have any thoughts?
Well, um, this was a controversial topic. But two years ago, when I got on, we didn't have an approved calendar. It died in December two-two with an extension. And I was the third vote that passed the calendar. I've been a, been a, been a big advocate for having a calendar two years out so that people can make plans. Some people don't get to choose when their vacation is, factory workers and so forth. It gives them some time to make arrangements. My concerns about switching it, I'm gonna just say, I don't have kids in the district anymore. I don't work the calendar. I don't care whether you go on Saturday, Sunday, whatever. I just think my concern is, we've had this out. You've got people that have made vacation arrangements for some of these fall breaks, possibly Thanksgiving and Christmas, that could have plane tickets, vacation money tied up, requests for vacation from their work, that now you're gonna possibly change it on them? I think that's grossly unfair. I think it's ridiculous, the fact that, you know, here we are, a, I'm just gonna say, like, a multimillion-dollar corporation, and we're still fighting about when we're gonna be open for business in August, six months out. I said, that's a concern. I think we need to get to the point where we have two-year out. We get this under control. I understand there's a lot of things we can't control based on the state of Ohio and in-service days. But from an educator's point of view, you need the ninety days. Ending the semester at Christmas is a great idea, especially for high school, when they have high-stakes tests now, with end-of-course exams, and then having an equal number of days both semester. Uh, being on the block schedule, I think that throws a, a monkey wrench in that other districts don't deal with because they're not taking end-of-course exams until later in the year. So I think that's something to consider. And unfortunately, you know, that's just my thoughts on it. And I think it's, you know, we gotta dance with the one you brung in. It's published, it's out there, I'm against changing it.
Mr. Young?
Next year, you can start at August one, I don't care. But it's out there, it's been published.
So my recommendation is to keep the current calendar. If the board wants to do a different process for the next two years, we're all for listening and changing that process. But again, I, I agree with Mr. Kleinfelder's. People have ma, have made plans. But again, moving forward, if the board wants a different process, I'd be more than happy to listen and implement that new process, for sure.
Wasn't this changed a couple of years ago as well? I believe I had family members that was, or friends that had had a trip planned, and then the school changed the school calendar.
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, it changes, up until last year, we haven't had two years out. Maybe one other time that I can remember since I've been around that we've had a calendar set two years out. I think it's important that we get to that point. But, you know, typically, every year in January or February, we're setting when the school's gonna start in August. I think as, you know, to be fair to people's employment, people, some people don't get a pick when they, their vacation time is. It's, you know, shut down two weeks in, um, July for switching out machinery, and, or based on seniority, you get your week in, first week in October. And, you know, and sure, kids are gonna, you know, parents are gonna pull kids out, do whatever they need to do. But I just think it's, we need to get to a point where we're future-centric and looking ahead. And like I said, that's just my thing.
So Mr. Conkle, do you see, uh, next year's PD needs being the same as this year's were? Or do you think there'll be a little less PD needs next year?
I think, I think it's gonna go higher, it's gonna be greater because of the science of reading. So every teacher has to be trained in the science of reading, K through twelve. And that has to be done by June of twenty-five. So we'll have all next year to implement that. So I think it's gonna go up, the, the demands.
Well, it sounds like that the, uh, it sounds like the, um, here, here's what I think I hear. I think I'm hearing that there's concern about August eighth as a start date. And then I heard concerns about changing anything related to days off where people might have vacations planned. I'm just wondering if we reduced a couple of those professional development days, would that allow us to start school a few days later? I don't know whether that's an option or not. It seems like that would have the least impact on people in terms of vacations being planned as well as, uh, being able to move the start date back a few days. So I don't know. Any thoughts about that at all?
Well, I mean, it's, it's obviously an option. But, you know, two other thoughts that we've not talked about is athletics. So calendars for fall and winter sports are set two years out. So if we change the calendar, that could impact athletics. Uh, and then there are pro piano schools. So there's many factors besides just our parents that if we change it, could be, could be problematic.
Okay. Any other thoughts from anybody?
I know that, um, and I don't remember which board meeting it was, but there was a, um, there was like a, a community survey done by a, a community member that, that shared some of the results. And it was kind of during levy time, so it wasn't probably, um, the best time to do it. But she did come in and share with the board, um, the results, and then presented kind of other school calendars in comparison just to kind of get some community input on the calendar.
Was that published anywhere, or?
That was Mrs. Burwinkle sent. She did a self-study of when every other school started, um, in relation to Ross, was it?
Yeah, and then she put-
It was just basically the start date?
And then she put-
Just basically the start date?
Yes.
And then she put a survey out there, if it was on maybe Ross's books or, or something, where there's a survey.
And Mr. Young, in the future, if we need to survey parents or have community forums with input, be more than happy to, to do that for the board.
So the eighth is what, a Thursday? Is that right?
I think so.
Eighth is a Thursday.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, even if you looked, um, and I, I mean, I would have to look at the calendar, but even, like I said, pushing it, pushing it up a week, um, like I said, and maybe having students come on like the fifteenth or sixteenth versus the eighth and ninth, if something could be done with that. I'd be in favor of that, but I'm just one person.
So you're saying, like, if we could start the twelfth instead of the eighth, would be better?
Yeah, like, maybe teachers' first day back would be, like, thirteenth and fourteenth, Tuesday, Wednesday, kids would come back Thursday, Friday. So pushing it back a week.
Is there a way to push those PD days ahead like that? To make the kids come back later, but the teachers are still working the same?
Well, the, possibly, but the challenge is you want each quarter to be similar in the number of instructional days. Does not have to be exact, but you can't have twenty-five instructional days in quarter one and fifty in quarter two because of quarter classes and semester classes. So, uh, there are some challenges when you put a, when you put a calendar together. As, as Mr. Young is shaking his head, we all get that. Uh, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's obviously a possibility. The, the challenge is, we went through a process. It's now six months out, eight months out before we start, and we're looking to, to make a change. Again, the board wants me to, in the future, to make changes, be more than happy to do, you know, what the board wants.
Anyone else?
I'll just mention, um, board policy IC slash ICA says it's the superintendent's job to make a recommendation based on similar districts. So a whole bunch of information there, I can read the exact. It doesn't say the Board of Education is in charge of making a calendar. And since I'm against it, I'm just gonna say, well, also, if you want to change that, I think we need to change the board policy prior to. You know, as Chad wants to make a recommendation to change it.
Yeah, well, the superintendent makes a recommendation. The board has a final say or approval, you know, one way or the other. Well, I don't think we're gonna hammer this out right at this moment. What I would ask, Mr. Conkle, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Conkle, uh, would you consider going back and just having some discussions with those same people, your administrative team, your curriculum people, uh, maybe the REA? And just seeing if there's any thinking about, could we do with a couple less PD days? Or could we move the PD days to, um, the beginning of the year and have, like, a PD day prior to the opening day? And move the day for students back another day or two, something like that? Would you consider just going back and having those conversations again with people, just to see?
I will consider. I don't recommend it, but if that's attractive from the board-
Let's do it this way. Why don't we make it formal and make a motion and have a board vote for him to do that? Instead of that, just being Mr. Young's suggestion? That way, it's more formalized and it's-
No, no, I, well, I was, I wanted to get his-
It's coming from the whole board that way.
I wanted to get his thinking about it.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, I work for the school board, and again, I don't recommend-
I'm not throwing you under the bus, I just-
No, no, that's okay. Hey, we're all in this together.
I'm trying to follow board policy.
There, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. No problems. So would somebody like to make a motion to that effect? Just, and, and again, it's not, it's to ask the superintendent, just to clarify, to go back and engage again with the same groups of people, curriculum people, the administration, REA, and see if there's any consideration in making some, I don't, I don't think we're talking about a lot, but we're talking about a little bit of a modification to the schedule, whether it be a couple fewer PD days and starting on the kids or adding the PD day prior to start and see what kind of feedback you get, if you would. That's the, that's what I'm thinking. Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Castater, would you read the, uh, call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
No.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. All right. Again, that's not binding that they're, that we're definitely changing anything. It's just we're asking Mr. Conkle to go back and just take another look at things, okay? See if we can, see if some, somehow there's some middle ground, maybe.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conkle. All right. Is there any other business to come before the board this evening?
Um, since we had this discussion, do we need to offer any chance for public discussion since we put the calendar on there or not?
I, I don't think there, because there's really no action-
Anybody out there want to say anything? No, all right, doesn't matter.
I'm just gonna reflect, I'm gonna reflect in the minutes that superintendent will reconvene the calendar committee to reevaluate the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar.
That's fair enough. Mr. Kleinfelder, thank you. I was gonna ask if anybody there had anything to say, so I appreciate you moving forward with that. Okay, well, seeing that there's no other business, uh, let's, uh, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I just say something? I, I just want to publicly welcome you new board members to the team and, and let you know that I'm looking forward to, to working with you. Um, I, you know, I've worked with, uh, Mr. Young before, but, um, you know, welcome Brent and Eric. And you're, it's, it's a great district, as you know, and I know you have kids in it. And, um, it's gonna be exciting, at least, at least two years for me, but, you know, four years to you. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say, on behalf of the, myself, and I think we need to say something. You know, we have lost a longtime staff member, Nancy Godby, passed away.
Oh, thank you, yes.
And, um, she had over thirty years of service as a Morgan Media specialist. And I just want to say thoughts and prayers out to her. And, you know, it's, uh-
I didn't know that.
Tough to lose that, yeah, I just-
Yeah, thank you. Visitation's tomorrow.
Yes.
Ten to twelve, is that, I think that's right.
Yeah.
At the Young Funeral Home, yeah. And Nancy, Keith, I really appreciate you saying something